Hello and welcome to another edition of Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by Colin. Hey Colin, how's it going?
How you doing everyone?
So hey, today you guys, I hope you are excited. We are going to save some stress in the coming months. Right now, we are in just a little over a week into October. And today, we're talking about the holidays because what I don't want for you is for you to be reacting and scrambling. The moment Young Living says here's Black Friday, right? The moment Young Living says here's Cyber Monday, right? Because that is the pattern that so many of us fall into as brand partners. We're waiting for corporate to say what the next promo is. And then we scramble to go and try to meet that moment and to get the word out and to do all of the things. Well, I want you as a business owner to be able to run your business and not have it run you. And that means we are going to prepare now for the season ahead. And it's going to be a lot of fun. All right. So if you are already someone who follows the trainings that we've done on content planning, this is going to lock right into what you are already familiar with. If you're new to this, don't worry, lots of great content on that. We'll actually be doing a dedicated winter season planning session in a number of weeks here. But today, this is a special session. We're going to be doing this in addition to what our normal content planning will look like on a seasonal basis. Again, just to save yourself the headache and give yourself now, give yourself the gift of being able to relax and know that you've got things handled in the holidays. All right. So head over into the chat, say hello, let me know where you're coming in from. We're thrilled to have you here today. Colin and I are going to pop out a video. And I've got some slides prepared for you guys and we have got a lot to get into. So again, welcome. We're so thrilled to have you here. We're live every Thursday at noon US Eastern time. This is our content planning workshop. Again, today we are talking holiday themes and we are going to follow the same plan, publish and grow system that we talk about in our other content planning systems trainings. So today, we're going to talk about how we can show up for the upcoming holiday season, fully prepared. We're going to talk about how we can batch our planning and production of our holiday content now. And yes, even for the stuff that there are question marks about, we're going to talk about that, right? Because as a practice, so far as I've seen for the very long time that I've been around in this space, Young Living does not really announce things very far ahead of time in terms of what promotions are. So we as, as, as brand partners who are functioning as brands, growing our own brands, right? Cause we partner with Young Living as brands, we are going to be proactive, right? And we're going to work ahead to get this stuff done. And my promise to you is if you follow the system faithfully, you can accomplish all of this inside of an afternoon, right? And if you want to work a little more slowly, you know, maybe an afternoon and a half. This is not something that's going to take a crazy amount of time for you. And I mean, again, if you could rest easy for the rest of the holiday season, not worrying about whether or not you're making the most of opportunities to promote, isn't that worth an afternoon? I think it is. All right. We'll also get into some live help and Q and A. As always, this call is a live work session. This is an opportunity for us to work together. If you have questions, please feel free to add those to the Q and A here on the live call. If you are joining us to, to view this as a, as a replay, as it will be posted later, I would love for you to come and join us live on a call like this one. It's a great opportunity to get to know Get Oiling, to connect with your community. And of course, to get hands-on help if you need it, we do have a lot of exceptional opportunities for you to get help, to speak to someone, to work with someone. And here on this call, you have that option as well. The second half of these calls are dedicated to an opportunity for us to work together live. So you can take advantage of this. You could also go into your dashboard under the Success Academy. You look for, get help from a real person and you can also hop on Pam's calendar. She's got lots of really great availability there as well. Now, if you would like to just hand off your dream projects, your website, your migration over from Flowdesk or wherever you might have come here from, you can go to get oiling.com/conceierge and our incredibly talented, super smart team can help you get it done. All right. So what I want to first point out here is that if you have been going through our content planning systems, if you've been through these trainings, you understand this is what a month looks like, right? And what we're talking about today fits in with this, right? So this is just really a layer on top of what you already have been working on. If you've been following this system, and if this is new to you, and this doesn't make a whole lot of sense, I'll break this down for you here real quick. In our other content planning systems trainings, what we do is we take a seasonal approach, right? So we, a handful of weeks back, did fall themes in August. We planned ahead for our fall themes, so September, October, November, right? Excuse me. In November, we'll do December, January, February. Now, in that time, what we're doing is we're planning out a month at a time and they each look like this. Okay. So in the month of December, for instance, you're going to have one live event. You could have more. You're talking about that live event in your social posts. You're talking about that live event in your email broadcasts. You're also releasing a blog post every week and your email broadcasts are talking about that too. Your social posts are talking about that too. So what we're doing is we're creating reasons to show up out in the world on social media in particular, because that's a great way to get found. And we're letting people know that we're doing something that's interesting to them, right? So instead of going and jumping straight to the point and saying, I have oils, do you want to buy them? Which is rarely effective and certainly not effective for the long term. We could get people to tune out and not really listen to us anymore. If that's all we're doing is showing up and just pushing product. What we're doing is, is we are approaching conversations from an angle of what is interesting to the people that we want to attract. And once they engage with those conversations, we're moving them toward learning more about what we're saying, what we're doing. They can see that we are aligned with their goals. And then eventually these roads lead to them going to one of your events or perhaps attending a sit-down with you, a one-on-one consult. And these are the things that lead to not just a customer buying something once, but a customer who commits to 90 days and beyond and becomes a dedicated Young Living customer in your roster long-term. All right. So what we're doing here is not about product education, right? We do lightly talk about product and its use in context with, with seasonal concerns and goals inside of your weekly wellness tips that you may get from us. And that does kind of count to a light degree as product education. But I just want to make sure that it's really, really super clear here. What we're doing right now, all of this work, this is not to educate our customers, this is to get new ones. Okay. There are lots of great ways to educate customers. Those weekly wellness tips are definitely a nice way to approach that. I would argue that having your dedicated calls with people that are focused on their goals is an even better one if you want to serve your customers. So what we're doing here, the content we're creating is not about educating the public on what Young Living is or what its products are or what they do, not in a specific sense. But what this is about is connecting to things your audience cares about right now, right? So that you can start having those real conversations that build trust. And that means that you're talking about things like stress relief and self-care during the holidays and not just taking a picture of stress away and talking about how the oils in it help with stress, right? It means we're talking about gift giving and holiday traditions and not just about the latest bundle that drops, right? And it means that we're talking about staying well through the winter and not just going on and on about thieves. Because the people that we're in front of don't care about thieves and stress away and starter kits. They care about the problems they have, the goals that they have, the conversations that matter to them. And if we can start with those things that matter to them, they can be open to thieves and stress away and starter kits, right? So mentioning products is okay, but leading with them is not because that is what makes people tune us out. They associate us with, with something transactional and they may even avoid us, right? They may even unfollow us. They might not want to hear what we have to say because we are just putting ourselves out there clearly exploiting our relationships for profit, right? Okay. So products can come up in context, they just can't be the focus. So this approach, if we follow this faithfully, is going to help you to grow a loyal targeted following on social, to build an email list that loves to open and reach your messages, to create evergreen content that you can reuse every holiday season. Remember what we're about to do today is something that you can reuse next year and the year after and the year after and the year after. Because we aren't reacting to whatever Young Living's promotion is, because we don't know what it is yet, right? And nobody really knows until the last minute. We are choosing how we're going to promote and we can incorporate their promotions into what we're doing, but we're showing up prepared, right? With evergreen content that again, you could use next year too. This is going to allow us to have deeper conversations with serious leads. Again, the ones that are going to be retained and not just people who buy a kit and never come back, right? And we're going to attract those customers that stick with you. And eventually, again, the people who stick with you are the ones that are going to be most likely to start sharing, which is what we want, right? So what this entails, just to kind of give us a broad level picture of what we're going to do. First, holiday themed events. You may already have some of these planned. And if you do, then you can check this off, right? We do want to make sure that we've got some holiday themed events on our calendar going into November, December. We're also going to create and be able to share gift guides. We're going to do this in the form of a blog post. You could also choose to do this in the form of a lead magnet, which I won't get into today. It's a little bit more advanced. We're also going to actually highlight some seasonal products, right? Because there are big sales this time of year. This is a great time to push product. We are going to just go a little bit more into the product promotion space than we normally would in our content. But we're going to do this in a really nice measured way that people are going to be more receptive to. And we're going to of course, be prepared to share when corporate does make their announcements for the different sales, new products, et cetera, right? And what we're eventually going to do, once we have all this done is we're going to be showing up on our established content schedule with a little something extra for the season, right? So if you are releasing the monthly blog posts, like we talk about in the content planning systems, or sorry, weekly blog post, monthly events, if you're already doing these things, this is really just a little cherry on top or potentially a little bit of an extra something, right? So we're going to break this down into two simple phases. The first one is planning. And by the way, I do have a download for this that you'll be able to follow. It's going to be released on the blog post that, that, that will come out when this, this replay is up. So the first phase is planning. We're going to use Write With AI and Get Oiling to plan some holiday themed events. And listen, if you, again, if you have holiday themed events planned already, this is fine. Check this off. You don't have to do more events than you normally would. Just make sure that you've got some things that are maybe specifically seasonally appropriate to the holidays, right? So these can supplement or replace your existing event schedule. Then I want you to plan for one or more gift guide blog posts. And if you want to take this a little bit more advanced, if you are someone who is very maybe intent on not putting Young Living product or talking about Young Living product on your blog post, which is something we generally advise for you to, to not do that a great deal. Because it just really doesn't work well for getting customers that you retain long-term. But you know, for other reasons too, like if you are someone who talks about wellness topics, if you're a practitioner of some kind, and there could be some great area as to compliance with health claims and things like that. You may choose to do this, right? Where you turn your gift guide into maybe a PDF and you put it behind a landing page. And there in your gift guide, you could be collecting leads, following up with them that way. And then you're not really placing that clear link on your, on your blog post between that other content you're talking about and Young Living product, which is again, it's a compliance territory that we obviously would refer you to corporate to learn more about if you have questions. But just as a, as a rule, we don't like to use product in the blog post often, but you can. All right. We're going to also plan ahead to share corporate promotions. I'm going to show you a way to be prepared for this before it happens so that it's easy for you to just plug in and engage when it's time. And then we'll also prepare to highlight and promote five to 10 products through the holidays. Now, the second phase, so that's our planning phase, second phase is publishing. We're going to set up our holiday themed events and Get Oiling. We'll create our gift guide blog posts, one or more. We'll create some sections. See, this is the cool thing. You don't need to send more emails. I don't want you to send more emails than you're already sending. Because you've got people who are really developing a habit of opening your emails and responding to you when you send something. And if we break that, if we go too far outside of the expectations that they have come to have of you, then we can break trust, right? And we can lose those subscribers that could stop paying attention. So we're actually, instead of creating new emails, we're going to create sections that we can pop right into our emails that promote these featured products that we want to promote throughout the season. We'll also do the same thing with these saved sections and saved replies to link to our gift guide blog posts. And then of course, to send people to RSVP for our events, right? So again, what we're doing here is we're creating little drop-in pieces that we can put into our weekly wellness tips campaign, for instance, or whatever the email is that you would be sending on a weekly basis. And then of course, as always, we do recommend that you are showing up on social on a daily basis. You can plan ahead now for the post that you'll be making in November, December, and so on. All right. Really importantly, these saved sections, they're going to be really easy for you to just drop straight into what you're already sending. And then you can show up on social and post as planned, right? So this again, fits right into the system that you may already be familiar with. We do have a checklist for this. Let me actually see really quickly if I've got a link here for it. Let me see. I think it's actually on the blog post. I'm going to go grab that real quick and we're going to walk through this together, you guys. Let me know again, as you're going through and learning about this stuff, if you've got questions, I would love for you to ask away, put those into the, the Q and A here on the live call. Okay. So let's go over here real quick. By the way, first thing, first, if you aren't familiar, we do have the Success Academy up here in the dashboard. If you go to get help from a real person, lots of great opportunities here for you to plug in. If you ever need one-on-one support or you have a question, our team is super available. Everyone's a brand partner. Everybody uses and loves Young Living products. So we get you and we so appreciate you. We also have done-for-you content that we release every month and it drips out on a weekly basis. And today, I'm going to be showing you how you can build on that with these saved sections that we're going to create. And so if you go into your Success Academy under online resources and courses, you can go right here to weekly wellness content. And it's going to take you through the steps to getting started and, and actually visiting our blog. Okay. So what I'm going to do here is find, I guess that's not live yet. Okay. We'll deal with that a bit later today. I'm just going to walk you through the process here though. Cause what we're going to do first is, is we're going to use our Get Oiling account to start planning our holiday events, right? So I'm going to actually go over here into Write With AI. And here I am going to ask AI to give me some ideas for events. Now, if you haven't done this yet, we do have a separate training on this. If your AI settings are set up like this, which again, I teach you how to do in that training, then you're going to get much more targeted and appropriate responses from AI. It's really important for it to kind of understand who you are, what your goals are, how you want to share, how you want to help people. And I give a lot of recommendations in that training. So highly recommend that you make sure that your AI settings are set up before you get started here. So I'm going to tell AI that I would like to host two holiday events this year that are not centered on product, but could serve to highlight product. Suggest five event titles and provide descriptions. So I'm going to click right. I'm going to let it come up with some ideas. And we will see what it tells us. And what we're going to do with this is we are actually going to utilize a Trello board. Now, again, this is a training that we have done in the past. We have lots of additional trainings along these lines. I'll be moving over to show you guys the Trello board here in just a moment. But here, look, check this out. We've got Cozy Home, Low Tox Holidays. We've got Festive Feasts, Healthy Choices, Mindful Gifting Workshop, and Stress-Free Seasonal Gatherings, Winter Wellness Retreat. Okay. I think I like Mindful Gifting Workshop. So I'm going to grab this one. And I'm going to go over to my Trello board. All right. And this is something that you can have for free. We've created this for you for your planning purposes. If you guys are using it, leave a note in the comments. Let us know how that's working for you. And, and of course, we'll make sure that you guys have access to get started with this if you don't have it yet. All right. So under here, under workshops, that's what I'm calling my events. I'm actually going to put down, this will be for December. Holiday event. And I'm going to open it up and I'm going to paste what Write With AI gave me. So it's my mindful gifting workshop. Dive into the art of mindful gifting and explore ways to share love with thoughtful low tox presence. We'll provide ideas for DIY gifts and sustainable packaging, fun hands-on workshop, leave with gifts. Okay. Excellent. So that's going to be like a make and take. Perfect. I can go back to this output here from AI. And I'll go ahead and grab this other one. Actually, let's do this one, maybe for November, for the Thanksgiving holiday. I'm going to copy this one and I'm going to go create a card on my Trello board for this as well. This will be for my November holiday event. And I will paste that in here as well. Festive Feasts, Healthy Choices. Excellent. For both of these, I'm going to go ahead and give them a date. So my December holiday event, again, this is the make and take for the holidays. If, if folks are celebrating, I'm actually going to do this very early, right? Because you know, whether it's Hanukkah or Christmas, that's going to be, you know, if we wait too late into the month, that's going to be a little bit too late. So I'm going to maybe set this up for a Friday night. So that's the fifth of December. I'm going to set that up for, for 6:00 PM. Great. And then my November holiday event, I'm also going to do that relatively early in the month of November as well. Because folks are planning about, you know, planning what they want to do for, for Thanksgiving earlier in the month. So I'm going to make that maybe the 14th of November, again at 6:00 PM. So I've got these there. Those are ready. I can then continue following the, the checklist that we'll provide to you. And if you bear with me just a second, I do want to make sure that you guys have this. I want you to be able to follow along with this and I apologize that I didn't have that out and ready to go. Let me open this post up for you guys here real quick and paste this into the chat. This is, if you go to this blog post here. Oh, that's sorry. That's not to you guys. That's to me and Colin. There we go. All right. So if you check the chat there, you can see that, here, I'm going to shift this over to the blog post. This is also where the replay will be held. I released this a little bit early today so that you can come down here and get this seasonal sprint checklist. All right. So this is going to walk you through all of the steps. So if you're following what I'm doing here, just understand that I also have the step-by-step drawn out here, including suggested prompts for you to use to go through this process, right? Now, once we have decided what our event is going to be, we are going to also come up with our, all the other information that we want to have for that event. So if I come back over here and I'm going to use this and I'm going to ask this to come up with an event description to use on the public facing page for the following events, the first one. And then I'll go grab that second one, which was this one. So I'm just going to ask for it to go ahead and do both of those for me. And then I can come over here in my dashboard and, and, and I'm, this is the, the planning. And then I'm showing you actually how the execution of this would look like when you're ready to create these events. You're just going to go into Get Oiling, into Events, create a new one. And then you're going to set everything up here. And again, I walk you through all of those steps here in this checklist. But what I'm going to do right now. Let's see. Here we go. I'm going to go and grab this information here. I'm going to go put that on my Trello card, because I'm not going to actually go into Get Oiling and create this right away, right? I'm going to come back and get this later. So I'm going to just paste that there so that I can use it later. And I'll do the same for the one that I created for December, right? And if I need to come up with graphics for these, those, all of that can be held on these cards in Trello so that you aren't trying to do everything all at once, right? Because the thing that's going to take the most time, waste the most time for you is going to be this sort of back and forth, right? Where you say, okay, I need to plan an event and I'm going to go through every single step of, of event planning in order for one event at a time. That takes so much more time than just saying, okay, what's my event going to be? One, two. What's the description for the event? One, two. Now I can go to Canva, create a graphic for the event. One, two. And then I can follow again, the steps that are in the checklist to create the campaigns and everything and have those set up, right? So that is the first step. So what are our events going to be? Now, the next thing that we want to, to do for the holidays is to come up with a gift guide. And we'll do this in the form of a blog post, right? Lisa, how do we get access to Trello? So if you go to, let me see, actually that blog post that I shared with you guys. Let me see. We actually have in our content planning systems here. Let me actually just show you. Here's content planning. Okay. So this is where you're going to want to start. I'm just going to give you a link to this. I walked through and actually trained on how to use Trello in this, in this post in the, the, the attached video here. You can use the free Trello account to take advantage of that board, right? So highly recommend that you use that, the one that we've provided for you as a template. So it'll be very similar to the one that you're seeing me use. And then of course, I show you how to use it. And, and just about every month, we're talking about how to use it in one way or another to plan, just like we're doing here today. All right. So the next thing that we want to plan on doing is, is putting together a gift guide. Now, my recommendation here is to think about who the people are that you want to serve and create a gift guide that's relevant to them, right? So is this a gift guide for parents? Is this a gift guide for teachers? Is this a gift guide for coworkers, whatever that looks like, whoever you like to speak to? What you want to do is, is decide kind of what that's going to look like for you. I've got some examples here. Gifts under $25, DIY kits and simple wellness sets and quick self-care resets for December. So these are all options of ways that you can approach creating a blog post. This gift guide will be fundamentally a little bit different than how I normally would recommend that you create a blog post. Because as I mentioned before, I don't generally recommend that you just talk about Young Living all the time on your blog, right? I recommend that you talk about the topics people are interested in so that they trust you when you recommend Young Living. Well, this is going to be the time of year that you actually do talk about Young Living. And what we're going to do here is actually put this in the context of, if you want these things, here's what I recommend, right? And these are perfectly fine posts to make every now and then. And a holiday gift guide, I think is a really great idea. So what I would do in this instance is I would come back to Get Oilings, Write With AI. And I would ask it to first maybe come up with ideas for a gift guide that I can use to reach my audience during the holiday season and introduce Young Living products through that context. Provide three gift guide ideas. And I'm not saying you have to write three of these, but you do, you do want to have a couple of options. All right. Annali, where do I get Trello? Yeah. So if you just go to trello.com, that's T-R-E-L-L-O.com. And you sign up for a free account. I'm actually signed in right now. You can, you can get yourself a free account. If you are, again, if you're following this, this blog post here and the other trainings that follow it to get yourself integrated with this system, then, and again, there's like, if you come down here, there's a checklist that walks you through all of the steps of getting started with the swipe file planner and Trello. All right. This is not, okay. So Allison, you did November planning in August when we did the seasonal planning ahead for the fall, right? And in November, we're going to plan December, January, February, right? And, and that's planning the winter. So as I mentioned at the top of this call, this is a little layer on top. It plugs into what you're already doing in November and December. And yes, obviously what we're talking about here for the holidays is going to account for things like New Year's, like Hanukkah, like Christmas, also things like Black Friday, Cyber Monday, and then, and then leading up potentially to New Year's as well, right? So pre, you know, going into the new year. It's up to you. Generally speaking, this time of year is the time of year that we want to take advantage of, you know, of a season where people kind of anticipate and expect promotion, right? And so we are going to be showing up there in this way. This does not, as I mentioned, This does not, as I mentioned at the top of the call, this does not replace what you planned for November. It does not replace what you will plan for December necessarily. It plugs into what you're already doing. All right. So Lynn, the AI training workshop and anything else that you want to find? If you go into the Success Academy. Here, I'll just type in AI settings. And we actually did a training on that relatively recently. Here's how to train AI to grow your Young Living business. So I've got the video right there. So you could always search right there. Yeah, the November planning is something that we approached in August. Highly recommend doing these in batches ahead of time. But it is October, so it's fine that you are just getting to November. This is, it's good timing that we're here right now. All right. Let me see. And yeah, by the way, if you've got questions, if I might miss these if they're in the chat. Let's see, in the Trello board, I saw you put the description in one box and there's another section for comments and activity. Can you talk about why you have two different places? Been putting everything in one box. It really doesn't matter at the end of the day. You can do this however you like. I, Trello has changed their layouts recently and I didn't used to use the sort of discussion space. But I do now, right? So just as an example, I'll show you a Trello board that I use to plan ahead our content here. So like, for instance, you know, next week, we're going to be talking about blogging. I've got my theme and everything that I use to develop all of the assets in the blog post for this content. But then I also need a place to be able to put the YouTube title and description ahead of time. So that's where I have this over here in the chat, right? In some cases, I, you know, need to be able to have not just a YouTube title and description. I also need a social post that I'm going to be putting in a group that's not ours where I could schedule it. So there are use cases for using either. There's no one right or wrong way, though, in terms of how you're utilizing. Just make sure that everything is on the card. That's really the main point with, with Trello. The whole idea here is, is that, you know, the, the things that we need to do to market our business are typically multi-step things, right? But we don't necessarily live lives of uninterrupted productive bliss, right? We, we have interruptions, we have commitments, we have things that we need to attend to. And so being able to drop everything that pertains to an asset you need to create into an organized space to come back and find it later, to search for it, if you want to search for it, to label it what you want it to be, et cetera, then, you know, you can do some work toward getting your workshops done. And then you could pick up where you left off really easily because everything that you need is in one place. So I don't really care if you just drop it all into description and everything's in the description. Or if you, you know, put 1,300 comments in here, both of these things accomplish what we're looking to do. And then, once you create the images for these in Canva, you just drop them here so they're there, right? And then you can use them later when it's time to set up and get oiling. I would even put maybe the copy for the emails in here for, for the event, right? All of that stuff you can do, even with the blog post content, which is what I would be doing here next for our long form content. So let's pop back over here really quickly to Get Oiling and see what these options are. Self-care Starter Kits for Busy Parents. Let me see, Toxin-Free Home Essentials for Everyday Wellness. Family Friendly Wellness Bundles for Holiday Traditions. I like the first one best. It's most specific to an audience and compelling. So let me just grab all of this. And this is, oh, that was, I got two of them. Okay, here we go. All right, I'm going to copy this. And now I'm going to just go ahead again, save myself some headache. I'm going to pop over here to my long form, my long form content board right here. This is where I put my blog posts. If you want to do YouTube videos, if you want to do podcasts, that works here too in long form content. I'm going to create one from the long form content template. This one is going to be the gift guide. I'm going to go paste all of those details in right here. I'm going to actually retitle this card. So it's more clear, Self-Care Starter Kits for Busy Parents. I'm going to save that. If I have time, I can go back over here and I can say, write the following blog post and I'm going to paste that here, or actually, sorry. I just had the title there. I'm going to grab this one more time. I'll paste that and I'll let it write. Now, I believe in this account, I may have a funny AI setup that actually provides like an HTML output. So forgive me if that's the case. That is a cool thing that you can do. That is a really fantastic shortcut to having like a blog that's already pre-formatted and ready to go. Not necessarily something we have time to get into here today. If you're a part of Momentum, come talk to me about it on one of our, one of our calls. All right, let's see. Oh, interesting. Yeah, it did. It did. I love it. All right, I'm going to copy this alt to clipboard and I'm going to come back over because I don't have time to make a blog post right now. What am I going to do? I'm going to pop it right into my Trello card. I'm just going to paste that right there. I'm going to leave it there and when I'm ready, I can come back to it. All right. So that's essentially what we're going to do, right? Like, we are going to use AI, create the things that we need to, you know, the, the actual words that we need to make the things that we want to make. And then we're going to come over here and save them onto our Trello board. Now, the next thing that I want you to do is think about some products that you would like to highlight throughout the holidays. And I know this is very different from what I normally teach, but this is an exception. So I'm going to say product feature. And I'm going to make a new list in Trello. I'm actually going to drag this over here. So it's next to my workshops and my long form content. So for my product features, you guys, sound off in the chat. What products are you planning to feature? Or what, would you like to feature in the fall and winter? So in November, December, what products come to mind for you that you would really like to make sure that you are pointing people in the direction of? So I'm going to start with very obvious with Christmas Spirit, the oil, right? All right. Oh, yes, Vitality Oils for Cooking, Frankincense, that's also brilliant. We'll also do Vitality Oils. I'll maybe have a few of those. So maybe I'll do Thyme Vitality, maybe I'll do Basil Vitality, Orange. Awesome. And I'll do Thieves as well. So I'm going to use these as a starting point, right? And these are just things that I can pop in and talk about on occasion throughout these months. And, and I want to kind of point out here that this is something that you really could be doing with any amount of free time that you may have to start kind of building out the content that you would want to have here to feature these products. So let's come back over here to our checklist. And, oh, that's not the right one, this one. Okay, so this is where we are right now. We're going to add one Young Living product per card and we're going to use a product image from Young Living, a leaf link that you can create and get oiling, and then a couple of compelling lines based on your own experience and you can use right with AI to polish this. So what we're going to do here is we're just going to go and gather images from Young Living. Now, if you use content, beautiful, beautiful images from Well-styled Essentials, for instance. She creates gorgeous images that feature Young Living products. This would be an option as well. Of course, if you feel like taking your own photos, you could do that here too. But I'm going to show you, super simple, go to Young Living and just find the product, right? And we're just going to, we're going to save the images and use those ourselves. So we're going to go grab, what was the first one? Christmas Spirit. There we go. I'm going to, this is a right click on a mouse or two finger click on a trackpad. I'm going to save image to downloads. I'm going to go ahead and do that for Frankincense as well. Again, just saving these image to downloads. What else did we have? We had Thyme Vitality. Again, save to downloads, Basil. There we go, saved to downloads. And I'll go ahead and grab Thieves. This is a useful one to have any time of year. Let me do Thieves. There we go. Ooh, those are, these are new. Seen those images before. I'm going to save that image to the downloads. All right, I'm going to go back over to Trello and show you guys exactly what I'm going to do next. Really simple. We're just going to add all of these. I'm going to drag them on my device here. I've got a Downloads folder open. And I'm going to drag each of these. There's Thieves. There's Christmas Spirit. There is Thyme. There is Frank. And here is Basil. All right, and I'll do Orange Another Day. Just to keep things simple here. All right, so I've got this information. Now I need to come up with a little blurb about them and I need to come up with a leaf link for them. So I'm going to come back over here to my browser and get back into Get Oiling. Here, I have a prompt here actually that we're going to use. That's on this little worksheet that you can use. I'm going to use Right With AI. I'm going to start with Christmas Spirit. Write to Natural Curiosity Driven Sentences for Christmas Spirit. That explain when I reach for it and why someone might want to click to learn more. No hype, no medical claims. Cool. It's a good starting point for a prompt. Let's see what it says. And we can repeat this process for each of these. Whatever it says, I'm going to go, here we go, I reach for this one I want. Yeah, perfect. Let me just copy this to clipboard and I'm not going to do all of these right now, just so you guys can see where I'm going with this. I'm going to come right back over here to where Christmas Spirit is and I can put that right here. Beautiful. Now, what are we going to do with this? I'll be showing you that shortly. Let's talk about where we're at, though, in this process. And you guys are doing great following along here. All right, next thing I want you to do is plan for Young Living announcements. Now, generally speaking, every year, Young Living is going to announce their holiday catalog. There's going to be something Black Friday, something Cyber Monday, something Small Business Saturday, right? And as dates and links and information become available, we're going to be able to update those cards. But what I want you to do is to just go ahead and create some cards in Trello for these. That way, if you've got some time and you're in Canva and you're making stuff, go ahead and make the image that you want to use when you talk about Small Business Saturday, right? Don't wait for Young Living to drop it. Go ahead and be prepared. So what we'll do here is I'm just going to add another list and that list is going to be holiday promos. Right? And again, we don't have these yet, but that's fine. I'm going to move this list over. Please, there we go. Okay. And so I'm just going to go in and add one for each of these, right? So there's the holiday catalog. There's the Black Friday, Cyber Monday, Small Business Saturday. And I think that that's it for now, right? So go ahead and the things that you anticipate there being promotions for, go ahead and create cards for them. If you want to go ahead and start creating the images that you'll use for them, or if there's anything that you specifically would like to say about these things, you can go ahead and start preparing for that. And that way, whenever Young Living makes the announcement, you're ready, right? You've got everything that you need. It's just a matter of popping things in and having them where they ought to be when it's time to promote. Now, once we have that in place, we can then move on to the next phase here, right? And that is to actually start publishing. Now, I'm not going to walk through the entirety of event setup and all of that here because like, like I said, this is an afternoon that you're going to spend, but all of the steps are here and they're pretty simple and straightforward. What I could do is just do a really quick version of this, which I'll go ahead and do now. I don't have like the image prepared for it yet, which you would want to have. But here, let's just come over here real quick so that we can have this done for just one of them. So I'm going to go to Events. I'm going to go to Add. And from the information on my Workshop Trello Card for my November event, I have Festive Feast Healthy Choices. That'll be my title. And I'm going to take what it gave me. And again, I'm copying this in my, from my Trello right over here. And I'll format this and I will give this the date and time. That's going to be November the 14th at 6:00 PM. And I'll have that go until 8:00 PM. You will be using a campaign for this. I'm just going to go ahead and save this for now by clicking Add Event because I need to have a link for this. Because here's what I'm going to do. I'm actually going to go copy the link for this. And we're going to do a real quick image in Canva, just to make sure that we've got everything set up and good to go for this. Here, I'm going to, I'll just use like a logo. I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to click Create and then type in logo. All right, I'm going to use this template here and type in festive feast and see if it comes up with anything for me. This is cute, perfect, love it. Okay, so we'll say festive feast. And here we'll say Healthy Choices. All right, I'm going to go ahead and download that. And I'm going to come right back over here. I'm going to go ahead and add that to my event as well. I'm going to go edit this. Because I want to show you, this is really important. I want you to be able to promote this throughout the season. And that's really the whole point here. So if I go and find. Here we go. All right, we'll upload that there. So now what we can do is we can go into our email templates here. And we're going to go act like we are adding a new newsletter, right? Using something that you may already have in place. Here's the Tip Tuesday Weekly Wellness Tips one that you may already be using. I'm going to go ahead and use a section and I'm going to find one that is maybe a photo on one side and text on the other. I'm going to go for this block here. I'm going to make that background color white. There we go. I'm going to swap this image out with the image that I used for my event. And here I can swap the URL in this button out with the one for my event. So I can say Register Now. Okay, and I'm going to actually go into Right With AI and I'm going to ask it to, to come up with something that's maybe a bit quicker for me. So I'm going to say, condense this into two short sentences to put into a newsletter section where I will invite the reader to RSVP by clicking the button below. And I'm going to paste that in from my Trello board, let it give me what I need. Perfect. I'm going to go click, so I actually think I'm going to click Add to Editor. Okay, it's not where I want it. I'm going to copy that. And I'm going to go put it up here where it says Text. Perfect. So what am I going to do with this next? I am going to save this as a section. So this will be Festive Feasts Event Invite. I'm going to repeat this for all of the events that I create throughout the season, right? So this is something that will now live in my sections, right? So in my sections, you'll be able to grab that and drag it into any email, including campaigns like the Weekly Wellness Tips that you may want to send or share, right? Another thing we can go ahead and do here is we can create another section here with an image on one side and text on the other. And you can put in an image here for your gift guide. And you can put your information here and link to the blog post, right? And save that as a section. We can also do this with our, with our featured products, right? And so let me go ahead and do that here with, here is Christmas Spirit. I'm going to upload that image. And you can't see this, but I'm going to my Trello board and I'm grabbing that quick little blurb that I got about Christmas Spirit. I'm putting that right here. I may want to shorten this, which I am going to. I may want to shorten this, which I am going to do. So let me actually ask right with AI to shorten this. All right. So I'm going to have it. There we go. That's great. I'm going to copy to clipboard. I will paste that here. I'll also go ahead and get, and I haven't shown you how to do this yet, but I'll go ahead and do that. You need a leaf link. And ideally you would have put this onto your Trello board as well. And that is in the, the steps that are provided here. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to copy this link from my market, right? If you're in a different market, make sure you're in your VO and you're logged in and you've got the right information here. I'm going to do that. I'm going to come back over here to get oiling and I'm going to click this leaf right here. Insert while link with my member numbers. I'm going to click that and paste in that link from Young Living. And it's going to give me this gigantic, really not cute link. And that's fine. I'm going to unlink it so I can copy it. Because you see all this stuff that's on the end, that question mark and all that code. Basically what this means is, is if somebody clicks this and they go buy, they become your customer, right? So I'm going to go ahead and hyperlink this image. I'm also going to add alternate text. And I'm going to link this button. And I'll say grab yours. Right? Perfect. I've got a little blurb here. I can go add this to my save section. I'm going to name it for the name of the oil. And I will save that section, right? So essentially what you're doing, all of the stuff we're doing in Trello is we are capturing information for the events that we're hosting for the holidays, for the gift guides that we create as blog posts that will be promoting and sharing through the holidays. And for the featured products that we'll be talking about through the holidays, right? And when you have those, what you can do is you can go and find, for instance, your, I'll go find the October one that we have right now. Our weekly wellness tips, that's our done for you content. So here's my blog format for October. And let's see, this one already sent, so I'm not going to worry about that one, but I still have the rest of the month. So I'm going to go and open this up. I'm going to edit this email. And I am going to go and add in, actually, I think I want to in Canva, I think I want to create another section like this. But I think I might have done that already. There's a from the blog one, I think. Yep. Mm hmm. Here's a from the blog. So let me come down here and drag in from the blog. And this was from the, the canvas section, or sorry, the canvas templates that I'll, I'll show you where to find in just a bit. You could have access to this. And then I'm going to go into my save sections and there would be my gift guide. So let's pretend this is my gift guide. Maybe I've got a, a place where I talk about my upcoming events. Here we go. Drop that in coming soon. And then here is, let me see, my festive feasts. There we go. And then I would also maybe have another one of these that I put products I'm using right now. And I can go over here and I can drop in Christmas spirit. Right? And after I'm done with that, I can go repeat that for the other the, the rest of the messages for the month, right? So I can go to 15 and I can go and edit and I can pop those same sections in. Right? Which is pretty, pretty cool. Now this is a this, this is a template. Like this is something that we provide to you. I've obviously gone in and made changes to the colors and to these images that are in here. If you want to make the tip Tuesday, the weekly wellness tip content your own, we do have a Canva template. If you go to the email templates and you go to add a new one, you can actually find right here, it'll say tip Tuesday weekly wellness tips. And if you scroll up to the top, there's actually a Canva link right here. And if you click it, you'll actually have all of the images that we use in that done for you content so that you can change the colors. You can create additional sections like I did for the blog and for events and featured products. You can do that too, right? So I know that this is a little bit of drinking out of a fire hose. So congratulations for making it this far. I'm going to answer a couple of questions here in just a moment, but but the most important thing for you guys to know is this. We need to be releasing content on a regular basis and that content needs to be stuff that's important to the people that we want to reach, not just important to us for our desire to sell things, right? And so if you are following the systems that we have in place, plenty of replays and done for you resources to work with to that end. Then you can do this in a really sustainable way that frees up your creativity, right? Just a, a personal note here. We practice what we preach around here. Like I just got through setting up almost eight weeks worth of content for get oiling and that's blog posts, it's trainings, like that's an event every week. So it's blog posts, it's trainings, it's all of the reminder emails, all of that. And for eight weeks, you guys, a business day. A business day for two platforms, by the way, not just us. We have another one for not oily people. So when I tell you this is doable, I really mean it. And, and what, what you're doing in terms of, of the volume is going to be about half or less than, than what I'm describing. So I'm telling you is doable. I, I am not someone who is a designer, right? I got good at this because I did this a lot, basically. You know, started out as a brand partner, just like you guys. All right. Does it matter what size the images should be for the featured products? I have simplified images and summer landscape or portrait square. It doesn't really matter what the resolution size is, like are they square? Are they rectangle? I would just argue that they should be consistent, right? When you, when you put images into email though, it is going to be ideal for you to maybe cap the size of those images so that you can ensure that they load on phones, particularly those with low data or poor signal. So what I might do is just, you know, use whatever AI you have access to and say, I have a file, I have an image file that I want to put into an email. How big should the file size be? And in Canva, and this is true with Canva Pro, to be fair, which I do highly recommend to any and everyone. When you go to download an image in Canva, you can limit the file size. So this is a good practice, especially for email template creation. Considering, you know, the file sizes is, is definitely helpful, but the most important thing for you to know is that for your blog posts, for your images, for what's going into your emails, consistency of proportion. So these are all square or these are all the same type of rectangle, that will look good, right? And, and that obviously things being tied together well, that presents a sort of trustworthiness in an inherent way. All right. Stephanie says, sorry if I missed this earlier in the caller in a previous video, but where are the Trello templates you've mentioned? Yeah. So this is a part of a content planning training that we do. And obviously Trello is not a part of get oiling. Trello is just a really useful tool. It's like a Kanban board planner. And it's something that I recommend, just like Canva isn't a part of get oiling, but I don't think that get oiling is ever going to aspire to be a replacement for Adobe. So, you know, we recommend using Canva and similarly where you're doing really often complex planning. Canban boards like this are really useful because you can capture all your information and stuff. So where you find this, if you would like to get started, is if you go over to, actually, I think if you type in Trello, here you'll find all kinds of great stuff. Yeah. Any of our, like if you go to our playlists on our YouTube channel as well, if you go to content planning systems. Where did I find that? Content, the first one. Hello. The, the content planning systems is where you're going to can I make that stop? There we go. Here we go. Viewful playlist. How to create and use a swipe file. That's going to be a really great place to start. And then we go through planning content, publishing content. And then I started going into from there, we're planning for spring, we're planning for summer, we're planning for, we'll be planning for winter. Yeah, we did two months ago, we did in August, we did fall themes. We'll be doing winter themes in a couple of weeks. So yeah. Let me see. Do you have the blog and coming events in Canva template? No. I use the Canva template to create it though. So if I go to, let me go find that here real quick. If I go to that Canva template, that's again, it's in this email template and everybody in good oiling has this. All right. This is the same format that we use for our weekly wellness tips, the campaigns that we give to you. So if you wanted to change out the images in those, this is what I would use for it. But Allison, what I did, here we go. I'm going to view this and open it. Make sure that's a copy. Yeah, it's a copy. Good. So what I did was I changed the color. So there's a tip, how to use it, why we love it. So I duplicated this one and I said, from the blog, right? And I could duplicate that and say upcoming soon, and that would be for events. And maybe here for elements, I would type in calendar and I would type in line because I want these to be line drawings. I'll go to graphics and see if there's one that fits. And I think that one fits pretty well. Style wise, so I can pop that in, make sure it's the same color as everything else. And then once I have those downloaded and saved, I can then have those as saved sections in my account. All right. Let me see if there is. Okay. Yeah. Saving sections. Yeah. Lynn, this is actually this new email builder that replaces the need for anything like Flowdesk. This is is a fairly new feature and we have done several trainings on this recently. So if you go into the success academy, actually, just go to live training and replays. We've just done an email design workshop and an overview of the builder, right? So these are both places that you could go. Our most recent trainings have been on that because this is an exciting new feature that we just released. All right. Thank you guys for so many awesome questions. Remember what we're doing here is dropping in sections into the emails we're already sending. We are maybe replacing one of our blog posts or adding one extra blog post for the season with a gift guide, right? And we're going to be dropping the link to that throughout the season. We're going to have holiday themed events and we're going to be promoting those throughout the season. And we're going to be inserting little blurbs with product link throughout the season. And whenever Young Living does pop in and say, here's what we're promoting, here's what's on sale. You already have a system to plug things right in, right? Just remember always, if you're linking to product or something that's on the Young Living website, use the leaf link, even if it's not a product link. If Young Living says, here's the link to the sale, make a leaf link to the sale before you share that link, right? That way you are doing your best to ensure that anyone who's not a customer who gets their hands on that link becomes your customer when they click through and buy. And again, this big reason why we don't generally recommend talking about product and emails and blog posts and linking to them. Because Young Living is not Amazon, right? For good reason. Very happy that they're not. But that also means that they aren't built for affiliate traffic in the same way that Amazon is, right? There's a lot of, of backend stuff that's happening when you click an affiliate link from someone who's an Amazon associate. And it's not the same on the backend with Young Living. So it's always better to start those relationships on a one-on-one basis. Helping people really connect product with their goals. And then you, of course, helping to guide them toward reaching those goals. All right. Really appreciate you guys. We will be back next week and, and next week, actually, I can tell you right now because everybody's here. Next week, we are going to be talking about blogging. So if you want to learn how to really dial in your, your strategies for blogging, you want to brand it, you want to get things done, you maybe want to see my secrets to using AI to write the code for me. So you don't have to format it every time you write something. We'll talk about that next week too. So yep, come back next week. If you want to learn how to blog. Week after that, we'll be getting into weekly wellness tips for November. So we've got a lot coming up. Bring your friends. Tell them to, they can leave Flowdesk in the dust. They're not even built for Young Living. We are. And we would love to have you here. So thank you guys for joining us. We so appreciate you. We'll see you back here next week.